We've reached the 10 o'clock hour. It's Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said boards so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time, while others items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. We call this meeting to order, and Kylie, would you take role?
Supervisor Borges?
Here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Chair Short.
I am here. If you'd all please join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Supervisor Wilson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Do we have any introduction of new employees this morning, Mr. Lopez?
None today, Chair.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any access to report about?
Oh, excuse me Chair, I guess we do.
Oh, we do.
I was not notified.
Very good.
Looks like Captain Stevens is going to introduce somebody.
Wow.
Good morning.
Morning.
The Sheriff's Office would like to introduce Joe Anderson. He's our new Animal Control Supervisor. And this is Jeremy Sutton. He's our new deputy.
Good morning Counsel.
Very good. Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Good to be here. I got a month in so far. It's interesting.
It's interesting.
It's been a good headway, though.
Good deal. Good deal. Glad to see you here, Joe.
Great opportunity.
Right on. Appreciate you being here to introduce yourselves. Thank you. Each old do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Not today, Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll request any deletions or corrections or additions from the board. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Seeing none, we'll receive brief reports or announcements from each of the supervisors. Supervisor Starkey, you want to go?
I do.
Thank you.
I did a lot of meetings, and I'm looking at my list, and I'm just going to touch upon three things. I attended two of the reaching rural listening sessions, and those are the sessions in which we are conducting within the community. So, we've spoke with health care providers about the opioid epidemic and things that they would like us to focus on if we are to bring this mobile MAT program to Delnort County. But, we also spoke with those with lived experience. And to me, that is a very valuable audience to hear from because these are the people that are out there that are exposed to fentanyl. They're exposed to what it's like to get released from jail, and that first use is when you die, essentially. So, we're going to continue those listening sessions. We have one scheduled for first responders as well as down in Klamath. We are going to meet down in Klamath and hear from the residents down there. I attended the Quarter Three Middle Mile Advisory Committee meeting. I was very disappointed in the meeting. Out of the 100 or so miles that were to come to Delnort County, 39 of them will be in this first phase. Forty-two of the miles is not going to happen until Phase Two, and Phase Two is not even on the horizon yet. So, I have expressed my frustration with the state, as well as Assemblymember Wood voiced his concerns as well, and we will continue to push that it's Delnort County, it's counties like Delnort County who are the most rural, who are underserved, not just underserved, unserved populations with regard to broadband and Internet, and we are once again getting left behind. So, that is something that I want you to know I'm working hard on to make sure that we get that additional 42 miles in Phase One, if at all possible. And then finally, I met with City Councilmember Kelly Schlong and Jason Greeno to discuss dispatch services. And I'm bringing this before our board now, so you guys are aware that these are issues that we are bringing up. There is some tough discussions happening about the bottom line of the cost of doing business. And currently, as it stands, it's about $27 per call for calls that come into dispatch with regard to the amount that it costs to run dispatch compared to what everyone is paying. And we would like to increase our dispatch for a lot of reasons by three more, which would increase the cost to $39 per call. And the city has been very much underpaying for a lot of years. And Supervisor Short and I are on a committee trying to get those negotiations going, but I wanted the rest of the board to be aware that that is occurring. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Wilson, do you have anything for us this morning?
Just to report that I did attend a North Coast Resource or North Resource Castle meeting up in Wyrika. We are addressing primarily those areas of concern that are especially with the dollars coming out for wildfire and fuel management and strategies in and around that. There is a good sum of money coming out for pilot projects right now, but additional monies will follow to try to reduce the fuel loads in and around our communities. Monies have come out of primarily out of Cal Fire, but also directly to our local fire districts for fuel reduction and trying to come up with ideal strategies that will help to prevent and reduce the threat of wildfires. When you look at our community right now, the majority of responses that our fire districts are responding to when it comes to threats like wildfires are from our encampments in and around our areas. They can respond to and have responded to certain areas as many times as three or four times a day, reducing and eliminating the campfires that have spread. And I'm sure many of you have seen smoke in those areas, and the response is hampered because many times the roads' infrastructure is not present for the firefighters to actually get into those areas easily and to get water put on those fires. But, it is an area where we're hoping that we can draw resources to Delnort County to help mitigate some of our threats. And I have had discussions with our fire departments as well locally, determined whether or not they have an interest in pursuing some of those pilot project dollars, because I think we can put it to some good use here locally. And we have, I've had discussions both with members in Klamath-Birch Track as well as addressing some areas of concern, primarily focusing in on the crime as well as the degradation of areas in and around because of the homeless encampments on many of our areas that have been infiltrated and brought in. So, talked to many of the, in Birch Track primarily, from South Bend all the way over to Michigan and that whole area back there, that has been a response both by the sheriff and by fire to the crime as well as to the problems dealing with the homeless encampments back there. And we've had several meetings dealing with that. So, again, we're continuing to move forward in those areas. We have some concerns down in Klamath that I'll be addressing and hopefully looking for holding a community meeting. We had discussions in LAFCO last night about some of those issues that are going on and what need to be addressed and what needs to come about in order for us to resolve some of the problems down in Klamath primarily with the fire district. So, those are things that are currently dealing with. And tonight we do have a tri-counties all together, all three, Harbor District, City Board, and County Board of Supervisors at the Veterans Center, at the Veterans Hall tonight. It'll be our first tri-counties where all three boards are fully present since I've been on the tri-counties. And I appreciate that time.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I'll be brief. It's really happy to see the 300-plus individuals on the bike tour that came to our community. I think it was an overwhelming success, at least the talking to their staff and the people that host this event for folks that are not only centered around the Pacific Northwest, but in addition, coming from all over the world to experience our hospitality was overwhelming for them, and they really not only appreciate it, but they want to have us on a future stop. So, great job Crescent City, great job Delnort County for really laying out the welcome mat for these folks. Dean did cover quite a bit of the Natural Resource Partnership meeting over in Wyrika here. I will touch on just one piece of this. It was this partnership, which is between Mendocino County, Sonoma County, Humboldt, Delnort, Siskiyou, really evolved out of a partnership around water money, water bonds. And larger counties, especially like Sonoma, would take their lion's share of that annually. But Jimmy Smith, who was a supervisor in Humboldt, really got it into his idea. It's if we were to form a coalition, we could really spearhead some interesting projects that would spread the wealth. And in doing so, created the North Coast Resource Partnership that was really spearheaded around these water bonds. We did receive quite a bit of funding through those programs years back. Most of it went towards the city and their infrastructure projects with water tanks and water lines. But, this program is quite morphed. Morphed not only membership, it involves almost all the tribal governments within that region. And in addition, into what Dean is really talking about now, which is fuel loads around our vulnerable communities. And we did really discuss quite a bit about goals for the future for this group, and I think we've settled on quite a few, which is basically stay the course on water and stay the course on fuel and really try to innovate around those two areas. Otherwise, we'll get left behind. So, liking the course of the North Coast Resource Partnership right now. Also had an air quality control board meeting where we really discussed how far we're in their rears with our programs with Calpers, especially they're just not making a lot of money these days. And so, trying to figure out how best to commit future dollars to them with programs. I think there's some opportunities now for the Air Resources Board to come to terms with some liability that they have on the books and really try to play that out in the future. And I'm hoping that we can learn from a few of those examples because I know we've had those discussions here over the last six to seven years. Had discussions with staff and community development and County Council's office with some issues around Tempest Boulevard. And then also Supervisor Borges and I attended a Natural Resource Goals Committee meeting where we will move a particular item on water risk shortage mitigation planning to the board for some discussion. And in addition, issues around elk management within the county. There will likely be a future issue in our September or late September meeting, specific to elk management plan being published by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Howard. Since our last meeting, I attended RCRC, and we were addressed by three of the top fire chiefs at Cal Fire, and we talked about hazards severity zone maps, and they fielded a few questions in that regard. We talked about some national air, ambient air quality standards and federal wildfire and forest health-related bills that are coming up. Didn't have a lot of time to field questions and invited him back to address the group again. Also heard from the Secretary of the California EPA, Yana Garcia. She talked about some Cal EPA's initiatives. SB 1383 came up again, water rights, hazardous waste management, and air quality and wildfire zones. That seems to be a topic of conversation when the question comes up about where we can do off-season fires to reduce the wildfire potential. Wanted to congratulate Ted Ward of our Delnort Solid Waste Management Authority. He was appointed as, to an advisory board for plastic pollution prevention. He's definitely an asset to that advisory board. He assisted Assemblymember Wood in some legislation that he brought up as far as, something that he introduced as far as recyclable, single-use, what would be kind of plastics. And Ted kind of brought that forward and said, "These things look identical." So, how are you going to compost one and throw the other one away? It's not going to work. So, Ted's wisdom in that is going to do good on that board. Golden State Natural Resources is an entity through RCRC. Was trying to get off the ground a couple of wood pellet mills using biofuels collected from forest, you know, fuel reduction efforts, kind of dovetailing into your comments about the resource partnership. Golden State Fire Finance Authority has moved to fund a loan to GSNR, so hopefully we'll get that project launched. We already know that if we can get those pellets produced, we have markets in Europe and Japan for selling those pellets. So, hopefully, we can see some forest fuels reductions, and the pellets would go to a good resource. I had a Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. Among other things, we opted to give the Solid Waste Management Authority employees a two-and-a-half percent raise that kind of matches what the county employees got back in March. So, kind of gave them some parity Had a meeting with Supervisor Starkey and Councilwoman Kelly Schlong and Councilman Jason Greeno, as was mentioned before. Attended the LAFCO meeting with Supervisor Wilson, and as he mentioned, we're going to have some serious conversations about Klamath Fire and their operations. And lastly, I met with the Performing Arts Center Board. They are in design phases right now of the Performing Arts Center. So, we're talking about the possibility of there being an emergency operations center incorporated into that building. Don't know if that's going to result in any additional funding for getting the Performing Arts Center built, but we're giving it a shot. And I appreciate Nick Rail and the board for giving us that opportunity. And that will do it for me. Moving along, we'll go to the consent agenda. Do we have any public comments on consent agenda at this time? Good morning.
I was just a little curious about number, let's see if I circled it, oh, 14. No, excuse me, I'm sorry. Number eight. You guys are approving to get a place at an emergency generator at the Health and Human Services Office on K Street. But, I didn't see anything in regards to the cost or, you know, is it just an open check? So, kind of like to know what kind of, you know, finances we're spending on that.
The agreement is not to exceed $45,367. It's right there in the.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry. I went through a lot of stuff yesterday, so.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on consent agenda items?
Good morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board of Supervisors. I know you don't like hearing it, and you like funding it, but you're promoting a social service sanctuary. You know, today's consent agenda is again abusing the intent of its purpose. Some clarification would be appreciated, you know, the land swap for number two, why that's happening. Number four, you have our mental or our Mobile Crisis Unit grant. We're up to $500,000 on that now, and that's just the start. You know, there's going to be a lot of long-term costs involved with that, and it's really unsustainable. And they're redundant services. You know, we have 911, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have Crescent City Police, Highway Patrol. Those are the entities that should be handling crisis, you know, and they can be backed up with Department of Health and Human Services. But, we need law enforcement to do those. Give that $500,000 to the Sheriff's Department, right? You were talking about dispatch. That's a great opportunity to improve dispatch. Number five, you know, you're agreeing to an agreement that's already expired, $582,000. Number five, you know, the board report has a term of January 1 through December 21, yet you're saying it goes until '24. Estimated member months. You have over 7 million estimated members for the year. What does that mean? If you divide that by 12, that's over $600,000, 600,000 members a month. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Number six, $16,867. Number seven, $140,000 for the legacy homeless hotel. We don't know how much that's going to cost us. I've asked several times without response. And we have a building department. We have a building inspection department. Why are we hiring more redundant services? $140,000. Number eight, $45,000 for the generator. Number nine, $220,000 for a new truck. You're approving over $1.5 million in this consent agenda. How many people do we have working here in Delnort? 12,000 maybe? That's probably a high estimate. That's over $125 per working individual that you're subjecting us to. I respectfully request you consider the actions of your approval of the consent agenda and do not approve many of these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on consent agenda items? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'd second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Move on to our first general government item. Item number 14, approve and adopt a resolution, amending measure R, Resolution 2020-13, expanding the functions of the committee to an advisory committee as requested by the auditor controller and the county administrative officer. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yep. Measure R should have independent oversight committee. It is crucial that we understand the true meaning of independence and the role it plays in ensuring transparency, accountability, and effective governance. An independent oversight committee should be just that, independent. This means that it should not be influenced by external forces or beholden to the directives of the Board of Supervisors. The integrity of the committee relies on its ability to ask the necessary questions and seek the appropriate answers without any interference or preconceived notions. We must empower the committee to operate autonomously, free from undue influence. Furthermore, it is essential that an independent oversight committee receives proper guidance and training tailored to their specific duties. They should not be taught by county council as this undermines their independence. Instead, they should have access to independent resources and educational opportunities that equip them with necessary skills and knowledge to conduct effective oversight independent classes and training programs. And workshops can provide valuable insights into what to look for, how to write accurate reports, and how to stay focused on the original purpose outlined in the ballot. One key principle of an independent oversight committee is that it does not serve as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors on how to allocate or spend Measure R money. The committee's mandate should be clearly defined and strictly limited to oversight, ensuring that funds are utilized as intended. Expanding their role beyond oversight would compromise their independence and blur the lines of responsibility. You must recognize the importance of an independent oversight committee in safeguarding public trust by allowing them to operate independently and free from external influence. Note, it is difficult for you to make decisions about oversight committees when none of you, not one, have had oversight training. Lastly, I urge you all to stop this amendment of the Measure R Oversight Committee into becoming an advisory committee. This defeats the purpose of an independent oversight committee and does not win public trust when the oversight committee becomes the pawns of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this item?
Thank you Chairman.
Thank you.
More of a question, really. You know, the whole Measure R fiasco is, you know, taxing the poor, making depression in the area worse. But, you know, Measure R was meant to go to vital services. And I was just wondering, if you could give me one example of a budgetary item that would be non-vital for the county? Would there be any? So, it can be spent on anything?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments or questions or motion.
I'll motion to approve the amendment to the oversight for Measure R.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. And just as a clarification, this is not removing their ability to have oversight over the Measure R. This is adding to their responsibilities as an advisory committee upon their request. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes, thank you. It has passed the 10:25 hour. We'll move on to our general public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any general public comments?
I've lived in this county 33 I've lived in this county thirty-three years. I have a nice home, beautiful yard, raised my kids here and have my grandchildren here. But I don't want to live here anymore. And this is why. I no longer have an eye doctor here. He retired. My dentist retired and was replaced by a dentist who does not believe in biannual preventative exams and cleanings. So that's limited me to once a year. I do not have a medical doctor here. In the last three years, there's been increase in taxes, sales tax. It's the highest in the state, especially compared to Sacramento County, which is seven and a quarter percent. I've had fire tax increase so that two people, or three fire chiefs, can get a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars a year to work two days of the week. Fire tax, and then the last tax is two hundred and forty-five cents sewer rate increase. Okay? You guys are in arrears with CalPERS, yet you keep adding more jobs and adding to that debt. You're talking about a forty-two million dollar performance arts center. Where that money's going to come from, I don't know. We still owe at least forty-two million dollars on the sewer plant. And that, people can't even, my grandchildren probably won't even see that paid off. And what do we have to show for all this increase in taxes and all this big expenditure? I don't know. Are you guys eyes closed? Do you realize how significant the economic blight is here? Do you realize how the roads are in disrepair, the city streets and the roads? We have nothing to show for it. And yet we get the hell tax out of us. We don't have doctors. Why should we live here? I am a woman of faith. Might not sound like it, but, you know, I repent all the time. Whatever the Lord says, you know, I may want to leave the county, but sometimes that's not an option. I could sell my house tomorrow. But for me, I have to wait. That's what I want you to know. That's what you guys are doing for our county. Think about that.
Thank you.
It's disappointing to hear those remarks that we live in such an amazing place and we can't seem to work out our problems. In fact, we're just making them worse. And it's the policy you guys are approving that's making it worse. Now, you guys are pushing out private healthcare because you're allowing government to do it. You're taking on that responsibility. You just hired a nurse. Sutter Health is probably looking for nurses. They need more. You're directly competing against the private industry, healthcare. Try-agency meeting tonight or a joint meeting? I'm not sure why it's not called a try-agency meeting. You know, you guys have had a try-agency meetings here recently, voted. How come now it's just a joint meeting? You know, you don't answer emails. You know, I come here with questions. You don't answer my questions here. And I'm left wondering what avenues I have to voice my concerns. No comment.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment period at this time. And we see Barbara is here. We've reached the ten-thirty hour, so we're going to receive a treasurer's report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Good morning, Barbara.
Good morning. Just do a quick update on the happenings of the treasurer's office. Nothing too crazy exciting, but like to keep everyone updated. So this is my treasurer's report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Grab this. All righty. Okay, so we closed out the portfolio this quarter with a hundred nineteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. About fifty percent of the portfolio right now is in government agencies, have fourteen percent in CDs. And CAMP, which is our liquid fund, which is similar to our LEAF fund, is about twenty-six percent of the portfolio. And I like to keep it about that, just so we have some extra cash on hand for any expenses. Mitigation, we have about three million dollars still in that fund. And then LEAF, because it's not earning as much, I have only about three percent of that, four million dollars in my LEAF account. Pretty much everything is in CAMP that I need for liquid assets, which is one of the little bullet points I have here. So CAMP is definitely earning better than LEAF right now. And any of our excess funds, I keep putting in there. Five-year bonds are starting to come around, so when I see something that I think is worth picking up at five years, I'll do that. But I'm also kind of being a little cautious. I don't know if you guys have heard, but I keep hearing rumors, you know, IOUs, state cashier receipts are low. Just want to be prepared, you know, just in case. And I know we do have some one-time funding with, you know, jail projects and some of that COVID money we might be spending. And I'm sure the schools are going to need some of that funding, too. So I want to make sure I have enough cash available for everything we need for the upcoming year. So interest earnings, because rates are great, this last quarter, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand in interest, I think that's great. We'll just keep seeing that increase. First quarter last, first quarter twenty twenty-three was six hundred and forty-one thousand. So we're definitely enjoying the fruits of those higher interest rates, which I think is great for now. I'm sure it'll go down. Okay, so you can kind of see here where LEAF is definitely lower than CAMP, and that's why I'm switching. LEAF is starting to pick up those, about a year of it being under two. And so we're going to see that come back, probably to CAMP rates, and then we'll see CAMP go down. So I'll just move money as I see that happening. Five years are slowly starting to look as good as three and four-year in different type purchases, CDs and agencies, which is good. And overall, the portfolio, which is, you know, twenty percent liquid, I have about one and a quarter years as far as my terms and years. So I think that's pretty good considering the earnings that we're getting. Oops, sorry about that. And this is just some of my investment activity. You can kind of see CDs are still really good, so I do pick those up when I see them. Some of the five-year bonds, if they're pretty good, I'll do a two million dollar purchase. But just kind of my basic routine, nothing new. When things mature, I try to buy five years out, so I'm just constantly making that purchase flow seamless. And then for cash flow this quarter, a little wonky compared to last year, but basically April was tax receipts and then May we had our big unfunded liability payment with CalPERS. June's a little low usually with cash flow. And then last year, I think what happened there was we had the same tax receipts, unfunded liability payment, just things cleared at different times of the month. So that's why that looks a little bit different. And then June was, I think it was a CARES Act funding that came in in June, so that definitely made a difference in the cash flow. But I think we're pretty much back on track with how things are going to be moving forward. So that's pretty much all I had for this morning, if anyone had any questions.
Barb, can I ask you to back up one slide?
Sure.
The two-dollar amounts at the bottom, government agency bonds for a million, CDs two, what do those represent?
So it's just basically so that you know, usually when I buy agency bonds, I try to buy them in a million-dollar lots. Some of them, if they're better, I'll do two. And then CDs, because we want to make sure everything's FDIC insured, I always do just under that threshold of two fifty, I'll do two forty-five.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board for Barb? Well, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment on this presentation? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll go back down the agenda to item number fifteen, receive a report from our chief probation officer. Good morning, Lonnie.
Morning, Board. Thanks for fitting me in and especially Kylie. I hit her a little late on the agenda item, so I appreciate you guys.
No, you don't want to feel the wrath of Kylie.
Yeah. So I'll keep it brief. We've had some productive conversations with the union. We're in a good spot and we're working together to put the paperwork together for the new positions. Side letter to the MOU, working through those processes, so we should have something. My hope is that we should have something to you by the next meeting in relation to the positions that we, that we'll be creating for the reentry officers. That being the case, we're not going to go live with the youth center at the beginning of next month. So that date will have to be pushed back. I will tamp my enthusiasm and not give you a date right now, but that'll be coming. We'll have, hopefully at this next meeting, we'll have processes related to positions. And we'll be going through the process with staff, existing staff, to get them into those positions if they wish and put those pieces in place. So structurally, staff-wise, we'll have those parts and pieces in place so that we can move forward. After those things are in motion, I'll be able to more accurately come back to you and ask you for a determination, you know, whatever mechanical structure we need to do that in, but a determination by you on the date that the hall will close for custody and we will reopen as a youth center and reentry services. So that should be coming in this next month, and I have some more details to give you on timelines and things like that. Program-wise, we're kind of doing some dry runs with our structure so far to try and iron out kinks that we may have and process as far as paperwork goes or processes and working with kids and families that get referred to us for programs. That's going along all right, and we're trying to finalize those documents and pieces so that internally, once we get those calls, either walk-ins from kids or families or calls from outside agencies and entities saying, hey, we have this kid and family that we think might benefit from these services, we'll have those things ready to roll. And hopefully I've worked out most of the kinks, and we're always going to hit something. But program-wise, we're doing all right there, continuing to try and connect with different people in the community that will be able to come in and provide services. Supervisor Starkey actually invited one of our community members to our juvenile justice coordinating council meeting this last week. So I had the chance to sit down and talk to her, and we'll see if we can plug her into that process as well, because she has a lot of skill sets that would be beneficial in that respect. So things like that, we're making those connections, and we'll be fleshing out what that program schedule looks like throughout the week, Monday through Saturday. Facility-wise, we're still working on those pieces as well. So we're going to end up painting, putting in some new flooring and parts and pieces of the building, furniture, decor, things to make it actually welcoming rather than an institution. We'll end up reaching outside and probably bringing in contractors for painting flooring. Doors, being an institutional facility, doors is a big deal, and that's going to be one of the most complicated pieces. We're not actually going to be able to swap outdoors until we're closed as a custody institution. And then figuring out how to manage access through the facility so that we have some control. People can't just wander into, you know, whatever corner they wish while they're there, but also have easy egress when that's needed, things like that. That's a big piece that we're still trying to figure out. But we're making progress. I'll be honest, my staff, we're tapped out, so we're doing the best we can, and I'm proud of the work that they put in, and I think they're doing good work, good ideas. But yeah, we're ticking along and trudging at this point, I describe it. So I'll keep you up to date, and I appreciate the time.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the Chief?
Any luck in hiring?
Unfortunately, not so much. We do have a DPO recruitment. They went through panels, what is it? It's Tuesday. They went through panels last week. I haven't heard back on testing yet. Usually they do those two things synonymously. Being an HR thing, I won't go into too much detail on what I know, but I'm hopeful on a couple of those, which has not been the case in the past. Numbers, unfortunately, there were three, which is, you know, we've kind of seen that, three, two. Numbers haven't been great, but I'm hoping out of those DPO recruitments, we'll get one or two at least. We did, and it's been a bit, but we have, one of our legal clerks has come on board. She's doing fabulously. We'll see how we can keep her sticking around, whether in that position or she's a sharp young lady, maybe something else in the future for her, too. We're still flying for legal clerks. That recruitment closed, and we're set for panels. I think we've got about five or six for that position. Having a heck of a time with a senior account clerk, finding somebody that can manage money and help on that end, and so struggling in that respect. But we're flying and talking to people, and we went to the job fair. I had a couple of staff there, so that was a good thing. I think we would have liked to seen more traffic, but I think that's the case with everybody, so.
And intake holdings and out of county?
We've got three in, no, sorry, four. We had a transfer up, a youth was in Santa Barbara and was taken into custody. She'll be going to court this week. But four currently in custody. We do have a couple of youth that are still doing weekends. So we had a young man in this last weekend. We should have two in this coming weekend. And so the courts are still utilizing it in that capacity, and we're doing weekend commitments.
Only quick question. With the four youth that you have currently incarcerated in Humboldt, have they put a limit on us?
They have not.
Okay.
No. I mean, it's like any other custody contract in the state, they can. And I know Humboldt has had their own challenges in staffing as well, and so that's a conversation that we have with them on a pretty regular basis. Jordan Anderson, he's our facility manager, has been for the hall for a number of years. Emily Johnson is my supervisor of juvenile services, and so they're having weekly calls, at least, with the staff in Humboldt County, talking through what's going on with those kids, what Humboldt's needs are, that sort of thing.
Great.
So haven't had any pushback so far.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. You down here? Nope. Thank you, Lonnie. Appreciate that. Is there any public comment on this presentation?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Norma Williams, Chapter President, Del Norte County Employees Association, SCIU ten to one. I'd like to echo what the chief said in his early remarks to you. We have had some meetings with the county and with him in relation to the transition and the impact on the employees. We did reach a tentative agreement on the side letter. Again, the devil's in the details, so that's what we are waiting for, is what the actual language is going to be, and also what the transition plan is going to be. That was something that we did discuss, because one of the articles in our contract deals with layoffs and employees being able to avail themselves of services within the county for continued, hopefully, continued employment. So again, with the timing of that, that was made, that is of concern, obviously, to the union, and so we're waiting to see language on that. Of course, if there's any hiccups in the process during transition or in the timeline, the union will always be open to discuss, again, with the county and even with the chief, to iron out any issues in order to make sure that any transition happens as smoothly as possible and that there is hopefully as minimal impact to the employees, or at least negatively to the employees as possible. Did we get everything that we wanted? No, but again, at this point, there are some things we did get that, once you see the side letter agreement, you'll be able to see. But again, the devil's in the details, and we're waiting to see those. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Any other public comment?
Thank you again, Chair. I'm not sure if it's the state's intentions, but the consequences being observed illustrate that the state is promoting crime. but the consequences being observed illustrate that the state is promoting crimes. We have three juvenile detention centers that are closed in our county, three of them. All right, two where they are now and want bar else. And what are we doing with those resources? You know, you're part of the citizens oversight committee. Does the state have any available beds? You guys say you want to solve the homeless problem, but we have lots of beds available in those facilities. I was just wondering, we're underutilizing the building now for, I'm not sure what you call it, juvenile hall or teen helper. But I'm wondering if there has been any thought about maybe moving them to another location that'd be better fit for their size and their function? And, you know, instead of spending $7 million on pallet homes, potentially using that building for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this presentation? Okay, a close public comment. We'll move on to our budget transfer. We have one, it's budget transfer zero-six dash eleven in the amount of $14,000 within the department allotment and special department expense line items of the flood control district budget unit for repayment to the Delano local transportation commission for culvert material for Washington Boulevard as requested by the county engineer. Good morning, John.
Thank you for having me. Just one point of clarification came up at the staff level. There was a question about whether it was intended for this budget transfer to affect the current fiscal year or the previous fiscal year, and the point was to have it on for last fiscal year. So that's the only point of clarification.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I will move to approve.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Is there any public comment on this budget transfer? Seeing none, bring it back. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay, item number seventeen. Approve and adopt a new classification description for the director of public health nursing. Approve a reclassification of the senior certified public health nurse to the director of public health nursing. And three, direct human resources to amend the adopted staffing chart as requested by the county administrative officer and the human resources manager. Do we have any public comment on this item?
The union doesn't, I mean, again, this was something that the union also had brought to the attention of the county at the time, and I know that we had resolved that issue through the actions that are afforded to us by law. However, I do call into question, and I did ask this of the CAO. I thought that he would have addressed it already with you, and that is recusing yourself, Supervisor Short, on this particular item since the individual in question is related to you.
She is related to me, and she is qualified for this position.
No, I do understand that, but it's just basically since you would be voting on this matter.
I actually planned on abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Recusing of myself. I don't believe it's necessary because we don't have a direct financial tie.
Let me get this straight. So you have a relative, and you're going to vote on a subject matter?
No, I'm not.
You're not related?
That's what I just said. No.
Well, it's hard to hear you sometimes, Darren, because you mumble.
Sorry.
You mumble in the microphone, and it's very low, and it's, it's, it's hard to really hear, and I got good ears.
I'll try and yell.
Well, you don't have to yell, but I mean, it would be nice if you could speak a little more clearly.
Okay, any other public comment on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, or a motion?
I will motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
And Chair, for the record, you're abstaining, correct?
That is correct. Thank you. Okay, item number eighteen. Approve the job description for the Office of Emergency Services Department OES Fiscal Manager 1 and 2 position to approve the creation of a flex position in the OES department for an administrative analyst 1, 2, and fiscal manager 1 and 2. And three, direct human resources to amend the adopted staffing chart as requested by the county administrative officer and emergency services director. Just to start off with, Neil, would you mind explaining the flex position? But that may not be clear for the public, so.
Yes, no problem. This is a process that we started actually through the budget process of fiscal year 2223. It was something that was initially brought forward by county council's office, and it just makes a ton of sense in addressing the recruitment and retention we've had for these positions. So what it does is, it doesn't create more FTEs. It's still a single FTE allocation to this department, but allows us to recruit for both an analyst and a fiscal manager position, depending on where the applicants come in for qualifications. So it gives us flexibility in that regard, and it also expands the applicant pool.
Very good. Thank you, Neil, for that explanation. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
I had one question also for CAO Lopez. It says that the job description was reviewed by the Delano County Midmanagement Group. Was it approved? Was there any feedback, pushback, anything?
Yes, it was approved.
Okay. It just didn't clarify. Yes, so I will motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve in a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, item nineteen. Approve and authorize a $10,000 increase to the Delano County's annual contribution to the Delano Chamber of Commerce as requested by Supervisor Starkey.
Thank you. I'm going to have this on the thing. I also printed out a copy for you guys. The reason I'm bringing this forward is it falls in line with our, since the strategic plan for our economic development. For those of you that don't know, this was brought to the board in March of 2020 and was approved by the board. It was a document that was with the harbor, the city, and the county, and it expires at the end of 2024. This is just basically the roadmap that the board supervisors in 2020 agreed to as where we want to focus our efforts for the next four years at that point. So transportation, education, agriculture, small business, et cetera. We outlined the various goal, or you outlined the various goals to include diversifying the regional economy, promoting successful tourism, so on and so forth. Next slide. So what I wanted to point out, because when I asked for this to be placed on the agenda with good, good reason, good feedback, the budget team says, well, what is everybody else doing? And that's a, that's a solid question. I think that is something that we should be looking at as where are the rest of us with regard to what we're setting aside for economic development in the community. The harbor has set aside $10,000 for the tri-agency. They do contribute $10,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, which is distributed to the visitor bureau and the visitor center. And they have a contract with a grant writer at $6,000 per month. What I did is I reached out to the admin of each of these entities to ask them. So there may be more, and they just didn't give it to me. Just, I wanted to just let you know, this is what the admin reported back to me. CAO Lopez for the county has indicated we set aside $70,000 potentially for the tri-agency. We do contribute currently $114,340 to the Chamber of Commerce, and that gets distributed to the visitor bureau and the visitor center annually. We did create internally some brochures highlighting our county-operated parks, and I am happy to report that the visitor center has been handing those out hand over fist at the visitor centers. They have several people that were wanting to find a place to stay for the night that normally would have gone to either Oregon or down to Humboldt, and within 10 miles, they were able to set up camp someplace locally. So those have been positive feedback so far on those brochures. I asked Alan how much the cost was to print those. He didn't get back to me, but I know that we did those internally. We held a little contest, and I put up the prize money for that. So it was no real cost to the county on that. As CAO Lopez correctly pointed out, we do invest in the airport, which is definitely an economic driver. The city has set aside $30,000 potentially for the tri-agency. We'll decide that tonight, I suppose. They contribute $102,000 to the Chamber of Commerce that is distributed to the visitor bureau and the visitor center. But they also provide $36,000 in kind for the building space. So the, it's about $3,000 a month. That includes the utilities and the space that they donate to the visitor bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. They have three positions, and this one is complicated, and I don't know that I'm going to explain it right. They have three separate positions. Each of them have a portion of time that they spend on economic development. The total amount of economic development for those three positions is 127%. So one gal has 25% for economic development and 75% for recreation. The total combined salary that is geared toward economic development is $103,000. They also have a marketing budget. They contract with Lulish Design, which is the marketing, or is the marketing agent that we use for the visitor bureau. They do $30,000 a year for that, plus $13,000 for radio ads and different things in which they can market. They have a micro loan program. They have an economic resiliency grant. They consider beautification projects and banners to be part of their economic development. They have public events such as the Kamomi Festival and the Star Wars Festival that they had. And then they also spend money, about $2,500 a month, in business engagement. Next slide. So where does our $114,340 contribution to the chamber go? Well, surprisingly, none of it goes to the chamber. What happens is, is that that money is given to the chamber for the chamber to distribute to these two entities. So the visitor bureau, and it's incorrect on this slide, the total budget for the visitor center is what I have here. It should say the visitor bureau, is about $200,000. Of that, we contribute $94,000 to that. There is a committee that is representative of all three of the government agencies as well as three of our federally recognized tribes here in Delano County. The budget, we see this every year. They come forward. They show us exactly what they're doing to increase the revenue, our click-through rates, all of that. I won't go through that again, but that is just where a portion of our 114 go. And then $22,000 of that, of our money that we contribute to the chamber goes to the visitor center. The visitor center has a total budget of about $63,000. They served last year, in the last 12 months, close to 18,000 people in one year. They send out 2,500 mailers, and phone calls are coming in daily. That is where our contribution is going. Next slide, please. So that leaves me to the chamber and why I'm asking for the $10,000 to be included in the budget to increase the contribution. I'd like that money to go directly to the chamber. As you can see, the Chamber Board of Commerce is comprised of business owners, business managers, all three entities, all three government entities, as well as all of our recognized tribes in Delano County. It is an oversight as to the various things that we're working on here locally. One of the most important things that is happening here is the, what the chamber is doing with regard to the collaboration for our economic development. Senator McGuire, as well as Congressman Huffman, has contacted the chamber just in the last three years to coordinate all of the community events in which they come to our community for, to hear from us about what we need from them, about our economic growth. The director of the Chamber of Commerce is, has been attending every single SURF meeting, which is the Community Economic Recovery Fund program. I have also been attempting to attend all of them. I unfortunately am not able to. CAO Lopez and Assistant CAO Hooper have attempted to attend these as well, but unfortunately, we don't hit them all. However, our executive director hits every single one. And then every week, our executive director at the chamber meets with Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake Counties to discuss topics that include offshore wind, but housing and workforce and transportation, and she makes sure that we stay informed. So with that, you can stop with the screen now. With that, I want to just make the argument that goal number two of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategic Plan is to promote successful tourism. We do that with our contribution to the visitor bureau and the visitor center, but I believe the chamber is hitting goal number one, goal number five, and goal number six. And given we have no other entity and no other position that is doing that, I believe that the $10,000 contribution to the chamber is worthwhile, and it's a good investment for us.
Very good. Let's hear from the public at this time. Is there any public comment on this request?
Obviously, this was so important that you couldn't even include it with the information packets online. Hmm, imagine that. No, you folks are squandering money away, and I don't see anything, I don't see anything. We're going to have tourists because we've got the redwoods and we've got the ocean. We're always going to have tourists. When I start seeing this, paying $17,000 for baskets of flowers, are you kidding me? $17,000 for baskets of flowers. There's not $17,000 worth of flowers hanging on our streets right now. $103,000 for salary, $102,000. I mean, it's, we need the chamber, but you don't need to keep increasing. How about this? How about paying our bills off before we start getting in debt for something else or passing money on for something else? How about cleaning up the town? How about filling the stores with some businesses? Because you're not doing nothing there. Nobody is. This, this town is, it's just spiraled. I mean, in 30, 30 years ago, there was more business than there is today. You, no, no for that $10,000 increase. Forget it. Do something positive for our town, for Christ's sake. Don't just squander more money away with nothing to show for it. Well, we'll get tapped by the.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing now, close public comment. Bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments?
I just had a question. Wasn't it, it was just a couple of years ago that we increased it by 30,000 roughly? Is that correct?
Yeah, we did for the visitor bureau. I just really want to make sure that that's clear. The $30,000, it used to be $64,000. That was earmarked for the visitor bureau. Now it's $94,000. That's where that 30,000 went, not to the chamber.
And then where does the 114 come into play if it's 90?
The 114 totals, I'm sorry, I thought I explained this better. The 114 totals, the 94, 340 that goes to the visitor bureau, plus the $22,000 that goes to the visitor center.
So currently, we give 114 total. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Howard, do you have anything?
Yeah. And things may have changed, history may have changed, but back in the days of the chamber, the allocation that the county gave the chamber, there was no conditional strings on where that money was allocated. So I don't think there's been any change in the allocation that comes from the board to the chamber on where it's allocated, whether it's visitor center, whether it's visitor bureau. Is there some change in that that, because you basically said in the presentation that now it's directed, but that direction's being given by the chamber, not the board?
You're right. I, for the two years that I've been sitting on the dais, I've always known that's how it's been allocated. I don't know if that was a direction or not. That's just how, being on the visitor bureau and being on the chamber board, that is how it's been allocated. So I don't know if the board gave that direction, the previous board gave that direction.
So I don't know if the board gave that direction, the previous board gave that direction, or if that is how they just chose to allocate it.
And then the, if, if the board were to make the commitment of 10,000 specifically to support the chamber, the business organization itself, what, what is the membership at now that's currently supporting?
The chamber budget is, it's about $47,000 with the chamber membership, but they also, then they get their revenues from the various programs and the various events that they put on. So the Fourth of July, the Sea Cruise, the Chamber Dinner, the Economic Summit, that sort of thing. That's how they get their revenue in order to keep the Chamber of Commerce going.
Right. That, that, that hasn't changed much from a, if you want to call it a work plan, but the, the revenues themselves have changed dramatically, at least in the past decade, to the chamber from the allocations and, and earnings from events specifically. The business membership seems to be stagnant. Has there been any discussion about increasing dues for memberships?
You know, we haven't, no. That's a really good point. You know, given the fact that we just got off COVID, and we were really trying to support businesses, to go and now increase that, it's not something that at least I considered bringing forward, but I certainly can.
Yeah. I guess we have, we have an important discussion tonight, which I think I'd like to get the read from the other two agencies that'll be in that discussion with us before we potentially made a decision on this. But my personal opinion, especially when it comes to these kind of dollars, is that the Visitor's Bureau itself, which is an arm of the Chamber of Commerce, has done a fabulous job at giving us a return on investment for those dollars, basically putting heads in beds. That's how that, that TOT revenue is what directly impacts our general fund and allows that growth to occur. If I were to look at it similarly with the board and the chamber itself, what function would the $10,000 go to support, assuming personnel?
Well, because currently, you've got your chamber director who's attending all these meetings, who's representing the county, the harbor, the tribes, everything at all these meetings. So it certainly could be put towards perhaps a part-time staff, perhaps an assistant, something along those lines to help boister that, so she can be attending, I say she, but it could be any, any executive director, attend, you know, represent us at all of these things.
Yeah, and I guess that gets back to, again, the discussion this evening, where economic development, for a certain extent, has fallen by the wayside now for at least a decade plus, and it's because very limited capacity, at least within staffing in the county, exists to do those roles. Randy and Neil, in particular in the administrative department, don't have the time to commit to that, which is why we've literally tried to push the money towards tri-agency to make that commitment. If it's a capacity issue that we're trying to fulfill, I would really, and, and the chamber is willing to pick up that baton and run with it, in which they're, they've done an incredible job in the past, especially Cindy and her leadership with the board, has done some extremely important pieces, keeping us informed as a community on economic development. I'd like to, I guess, further that discussion some, to really understand what the board's goals and objectives are for fulfilling that capacity needs, which you just outlined, specifically with SURF and INCERT.
Absolutely. And so if, if nothing else, if, if we don't make a decision today, I do want to have this be at the forefront. I mean, this, this SED's document, you know, we've never had an update on it as a board since I've been here for two and a half years. I'd love to know where we're, where are we at as a county with meeting some of the goals that are outlined in SED's? So I, I mean, if, if nothing comes from this discussion today, other than this, this needs to be a discussion, this needs to be a priority for this board, then, then I certainly feel that, that that's a success, because we definitely, I mean, we need to have some direction. We need to be deciding things. We can't just have a document that sits on a shelf and collects dust.
Correct. And, and to that extent, I'm sure some other board members would like to add to this. You know, we, we've transitioned as a community over the last 30 years from a resource-driven economy, and we almost to a certain extent put all our eggs in one basket. I think the community through the SED's document spoke very clearly for the direction, at least in that four years, on where we should concentrate some energies, but there's no capacity to do it. We've done great in one of those areas, which is tourism, and that's because we've decided as a community to invest those dollars. How do we do that now similarly with these other five pieces of teams, which is the acronym for those pieces? How do we similarly invest to gain those dollars that are going to return, at least to the county, in our general fund? I could see a mechanism with tourism for doing that. It's difficult for me to see right now with the rest of those how that works out potentially. So again, a great discussion tonight to see where the other agencies are at, because we can't be siloed in this approach with economic development, and if the chamber is going to help us build that capacity, I could be extremely supportive, but just want to get that feedback.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Wilson, did you have anything?
Yeah, my, my only comment is, is that this is a, a long ago problem in, in the fact that the TOT tax, the raise in the TOT tax long ago, was sold and put forward that, that, that those dollars were going to go to help promote commercial growth, and part of those dollars was supposed to go to the Chamber of Commerce. And the percentage of growth in our TOT tax over the last several years has been, you know, exceeding expectations, and we've done very well. And yet, we're expected to, even though our TOT tax is only a fraction of what the city shares and has forward and has benefited from, that, that we're, we're expected to, to fund the lion's share when this money should be coming directly out of the TOT to support the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. You know, I'll have to be candid, when I, when I saw you put this on the agenda, I kind of made the assumption that the chamber was just going to funnel this money back into the Visitor's Bureau, and I was kind of really in favor because of the tremendous progress they've made and, you know, provable things that they've brought to us and told us about all the, the views and the hits that we get on the internet-based outreach and, and all of the other results that we get from their efforts. I'm just, I'm just curious, what, what specifically this $10,000 would the chamber do? What, what is the, the goals that they would accomplish with this $10,000?
Well, like I said to Supervisor Howard just now, it could go toward assisting the executive director's function right now. I mean, she is, she's it as far as the county goes with regard to creating new businesses in this community. Just last week, she spent hours with these two young 16-year-olds who wanted to start a business, and she, it was her, that was the only place that they knew to go. The county doesn't have anything like that, doesn't have an economic developer. They go to the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce for her to walk through the business aspects of things. And, and without the county having something available, this is our only route to hit some of these goals with regard to providing thriving small business environments, enhancing workforce training and housing and healthy lifestyles, and diversifying the regional economy to include, you know, the technology-based firms. That's it. That's all the county has. And so my thought was, let's invest more in the one entity that is providing those services. We're hitting three goals with a very small amount. Goal two, I, I think we nailed it. You're absolutely right. We invested in tourism, and, and we've, we've nailed it. I'd like to see us now invest in the, the creation of the job market and that sort of thing. So that, that's why I brought it forward, and I believe in the work that the chamber does. I see it on a regular basis, and that's, that's why I, I asked to bring it forward.
And?
Thank you.
I can agree with you more, Supervisor Starkey. I just want, I, I would propose that we table this because I think the conversation is essentially premature before tonight's discussion. I, we, I think we, as a board, really need to get a read from everybody on where, we'd like to see what limited dollars we have invested in economic development, because the chamber could clearly play some of these roles and has done a great job playing that role in the past. But we, if, if, if we were to shift focus from tri-agency to the chamber and how those investments were made, they need to gear up and do the same thing as it relates to the SED, which is currently the, the tri-agency's current objective is to implement that plan. There's just not a body to do it. So we, we need to look at those capacity issues on a whole as, as a community instead of just siloed as, as a board.
Yeah, and I just want to, one final thought is that it could be premature, but I also think it's a good discussion for us to be having.
Yeah, agree.
Ahead of tonight's meeting. So I, I do appreciate the time that you gave me to be able to discuss this.
Very good. I think your motion to table is probably in order, because I think none of us want to see this idea go away, just maybe get some, some more specifics on how, how the money could or would be used. Do I have a second to table?
I have a second.
Okay. Kylie, would you, I guess, pull the vote.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yeah, and that's a yes for me. Okay, with that, I believe we're finished. Kylie, is that correct? All right, we're going to adjourn this meeting until our next meeting, August 8th, 2023. Thank you all for coming. Oh, we, I'm sorry, we are going to continue our closed session discussion, and Joel, do we think we'll have anything to report out?
No, I don't.
I didn't think so, so we are going to continue a closed session.